Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call White Marsh Township Board of Supervisor Meeting of January 23rd, 2020 to order.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some announcements tonight, and I'll turn it over to Fran.
Okay. The board would like to thank our first responders who assisted at Sherry Lake Apartments earlier this week. I know that our fire marshal's going to talk a little bit about that, but we'd like to let everybody know that the Colonial Neighborhood Council is collecting food and toiletry donations for victims, and they can be reached at (610) 828-6595 or through their Facebook page. We would like to remind all residents that anyone in need of a smoke detector can get one free of charge by calling the White Marsh Fire Marshal's office at (484) 594-2614 or stopping by the Township Building. Thank you to all our residents and volunteers who attended the William Jean's Libraries Day of Services past Monday. Your efforts resulted in hundreds of items being assembled for local charities, including Meals on Wheels, Montgomery County SPCA, and Laurel House, among others. Are you worried you can't make it to Comic-Con this year? No worries. Stay local and get your Star Wars fix by attending William Jean's Libraries Star Wars Day on Saturday, February 1st from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There will be crafts, raffles, snacks, and of course, a costume contest. Additional details are available at jeanslibrary.org.
And can I say it's probably the only place that you'll get to see Darth Vader checking out your books.
Moving on to new things, Rick, do you want to introduce our new fire marshal?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Nester. If I could have Nick Weaver please come up to the podium, please.
Good evening.
And as mentioned, I'm pleased to announce the hiring of Nick Weaver as the fire marshal in White Marsh Township. Nick started this past Tuesday, January 21st. Nick comes to White Marsh Township after spending five years as a career firefighter, fire inspector with Ben Salem Township. He was responsible for conducting plan reviews, fire investigation, and administering fire prevention programs. Nick also works for Ben Salem Emergency Medical Service as a part-time EMT, teaches firefighting, inspection, and rescue courses at Bucks County Community College, and works part-time for fire planning associates as a pre-planner and consultant. He is also a volunteer firefighter at both Newtown Fire Association and Nottingham Fire Company. Nick holds a bachelor's degree of arts in fire science and public safety administration from Holy Family University, and a master of science degree in public safety administration from St. Joe's University. Appreciate Nick being here this evening. Would also like to recognize his wife Erin, who is also here, and welcome them both to the White Marsh Township family. So. Welcome. And while Nick is shaking everyone's hands, as was mentioned by Supervisor McCusker, we had the unfortunate first day he was called to that very fire at Sherry Lake, and thankfully there was no loss of human life there, which was very important. But I asked Nick if he could just give a brief update on the fire and where we are right now. So, Nick?
Of course. As you know, we discussed is that there was a fire Tuesday morning around 9:00. It was dispatched. Luckily, there was no loss of any human life. We did lose a cat, regretfully, but Red Poll and the first responders were really good at getting everyone's animals out. It is a priority for us. You did have 16 units damaged. Spring Mill Fire Company was the lead first responders there, as well as Barron Hill Fire Company was assisting them, White Marsh Ambulance, as well as other volunteer fire departments in the area. Public Works of White Marsh Township was great at responding, providing salt for the ice because it was very cold that day and windy, and that's a big concern for us, lots of water on the ground. We're still investigating the fire at this time, but we know for a fact it was not intentionally set, not an arson. Like I said, still an ongoing investigation, and we're hoping maybe to get four residents or four units back in maybe by end of this week or next week out of the whole 16. The fire company saved a lot of that building. So.
So, and as was mentioned, you know, those that were displaced did have renters insurance. The Sherry Lake does require those tenants to have renters insurance as well as their own insurance. So, you know, I think, as Nick mentioned, everyone involved, certainly the police department chief, chief wards officers, all being involved in this. It was, you know, an unfortunate situation. No one likes to go through this, but I think it shows the strength of working together of all these different emergency service providers in this community and from the surrounding communities and being able to work together. I think, you know, was able to make this, you know, situation not worse than what it could have been. So certainly thank all of those, and, you know, Nick did come back, obviously, after his second day, and, you know, that was a very tough, tough, but, you know, certainly has the experience, as I did mention, in doing this, and we're real excited to have him onboard.
I just want to thank you again, and behalf of all the board and the township, for your first week, like, that you are back and stepping up so quickly is really impressive, and also being here tonight to speak to it. Thank you for that. And we went really quickly through the announcements. Residents have been reaching out asking how they can help, and we've had a few fires this winter so far in the township. So, everybody is okay. Everything is happening the way it's supposed to happen, but if you're still wanting to help, I know that there are emails going around to be able to do fundraising, and Colonial Neighborhood Council, like Fran mentioned, is another way, if you're not familiar with them. I think you can, what was the website again?
There are Facebook.
So, there's a Facebook page and a phone number.
Yeah.
I did have the opportunity to stop down at Sherry Lake after the fire, and I spoke
Again, Fran, would you like to speak a little bit to this?
to a few of the residents, and one of the things that they really replied about was our professionalism and courtesy of our emergency services, all of them, and that's really great to hear. We can say thank you from up here, but we weren't the ones down there responding. Tonight, we're going to honor the St. Phillips baseball team who won the Archdiocese You guys were. And hear from our residents who went through a traumatic experience, that's a big deal. in Championship last year, and we got them all in attendance. So, thank you very much. And, you know, again, it's a great way to offer charity as a community, to come together It only took about six months. That's typical St. Philip fashion. But I'd like to invite the coaches up to the podium. and help the people who are displaced. But like Rick was mentioning, everybody has a place to stay and everybody's doing okay. Coach Rocks, I think you would lead this. I don't know if Coach Flaherty and Coach Gubasal want to come up, but more than, love But anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
to have you up here.
We'd like to invite your wife Erin and family up for a picture.
So, Coach Rocks is going to talk about the team a little bit.
I'm going up here.
To win the Archdiocese is a really big deal. So, there's about, and I know these guys will correct me, there's about 100 teams altogether in Philadelphia and the surrounding suburbs. So, to win one of these trophies is huge. It doesn't happen every year, that's for sure. In fact, I think we only have a handful over our whole history at St. Phillips. But these three gentlemen up here who coached the team, they devote a lot of time. It's not just, not just in coaching, you know. Coach Rocks and Coach Flaherty are both on the Board of Directors, so they give a lot of time to our youth. Coach Gubasal doesn't even have a player on the team, doesn't have a kid in the school, and he comes out and offers his expertise every year. So, we're very fortunate at St. Phillips to have these guys step up. And I see numerous other coaches out there, not to miss you, but the impact the coach has on a kid who's in seventh and eighth grade lasts a lifetime. So, given that service, we really appreciate it. So, I'll turn it over to you, Tom, to celebrate the team a little bit. So, congratulations, guys.
Thank you, Fran. Thank you to all of you for recognizing us tonight. It really was a remarkable accomplishment, and 17 of these 18 kids grew up playing White Marsh Little League, and we have to tip our hat to all of you because our facilities are second to none. You go around our district and around our region, and people want to come and play baseball in White Marsh because it really is remarkable facilities and a remarkable program. There was a time-
Who let the other kid on the team? Who let the non-White Marsh kid on the team?
We sat his ass all year, but that's a whole other story. No, I'm only kidding, Carter. I'm only kidding. He played for Flaherty Town, but we did get him in. But there was a time when the White Marsh program was not all that strong in districts, and recent history has changed that thing, and now Michael has taken over and is running a great program, and it's in very capable hands, and we're looking forward to more success, Michael, moving forward. So, first of all, Fran, thank you as President CYO, giving me the opportunity to coach this team. It was a real honor. It doesn't matter, no one else volunteered. It's still an honor for me. I want to let you know that. So, it really, the success comes from the two guys behind me. Kevin is a lifelong friend and knows more about baseball than I will ever know or most people in this room, and I tip my hat to him. And like Fran said, we pulled Jeff Gubasal in, and we told Jeff we feel like we have this really special group of kids, and to come onboard with us, and we're going to show you, and you're going to help us get over the top. And what we did is, we had a scrimmage game to show them how good we are, and we got skunked in the scrimmage game, and then went out and lost our first game in regions. And Jeff looked at Kevin and I like, really? You guys serious? So, after that point, the boys did not do too many things wrong. They had a remarkable run, and it was an experience of a lifetime. So, I tip my hat, number one, to all the families involved, all 17 families, we had twins. All 17 families that were involved in the program were remarkably supportive of us all the way through, and it doesn't get any better than that when you have that type of support. And then the thing that delivered this were the 18 kids that we put on that playing field. What a remarkable, great group of kids that they are, and I look forward to seeing them on a baseball field somewhere in the future, or saying, hey, hi, Mr. Rocks at Wawa. It doesn't matter. It's an experience that we all got to experience together, and we're blessed to all have had that experience. So, thank you all for recognizing us tonight, and we've been coaching, Kevin and Jeff and I have been coaching the program a long time. Ryan, one of my favorite all time, Lar. But really, we really appreciate what you guys are doing. And Fran, would I ask you if you don't mind delivering this to the parish, and hope there's a lot more behind this one? Thank you.
We have certificates for all of the players. If we can announce them and have them come up and receive their certificate, that would be great.
Coach Gubasal. I guess we're going to go in coaches' order. Coach Flaherty. Coach Rocks.
If we could have you stand in front here, and then we'll bring everybody up to here for a picture? That'd be great. No, you could stay there, Fran. Supervisor McCusker.
Gavin Rocks. Joe Foy. Trying to move through this. I messed up your name on purpose.
We're standing back here.
Can I get on top of the shoulders?
Fran, that trophy stays at the Township Building, correct? Fran?
I don't have any trophies from my childhood, so that might stay with me.
We're just going to pause for a moment while everybody who doesn't want to stay for the rest of the meeting has a chance to leave.
They're not here for the liquor license transfer, so there you go. Exactly. You can breathe now. Then you're all set. Yeah, exactly. Right, exactly. Yeah.
Okay, I think, I think we're clear. I think we're good. Move on to more business items. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing for liquor license transfer at 10 East Germantown Pike Giant Food Stores LLC?
I'm moved.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
And just for clarification, that's Ridge Pike, right? At Germantown.
I said Germantown.
Yeah.
10 East Ridge Pike.
Just so it's clear.
Giant Food Stores.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I am going to go ahead and put a couple of things in the record, going to mark as T1 a copy of the advertisement of this public hearing twice, which was required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Code and our newspaper of general circulation, The Times-Herald. It ran on January 9th, 2020, and January 16th, 2020. What is important is, you may remember, this was originally on the schedule for reorganization, unbeknownst to us, The Times-Herald did not run the, even though we requested it, did not run the advertisement twice, thus the delay while we're here, while we are here this evening. So, before you is an application for a liquor, for a liquor license at our Giant Food Store here in White Marsh Township. And just a note of information that I had spoken to the manager before in preparation for this hearing is, many of the supervisors and members at a public may be used to frequenting the Pennsylvania State Store, which is in that same shopping center. Unfortunately, the township has become aware that that may be moving, and there will no longer be a state store in the same shopping center as what this proposed Giant Liquor Sales is. So, I see the attorney for the application, Ms. Freeman, if you wanted to go ahead and present.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Freeman. I'm an attorney with Flaherty and O'Hara. I represent Giant Food Stores in their application for liquor licenses across Pennsylvania, and we are here to request an approval from White Marsh Township, which would move a liquor license essentially outside of White Marsh Township into it. It's currently located in Montgomery Township, and this intermunicipal transfer process is governed by the Liquor Code, Section 461B3. And basically, that section just states that a public hearing shall be had in order to give residents of White Marsh Township the opportunity to voice their comments and recommendations to the board in regards to Giant's operation of a liquor license. This is not Giant's first liquor license in Pennsylvania. If you're familiar with any of their other stores, they have 114 licenses in Pennsylvania now that are open and operating. Most sell both beer and wine, some just sell beer. It depends on the license that they get. The license that they would be transferring into White Marsh Township is a restaurant liquor license, so they would be selling beer and wine for on-premises consumption, and beer and wine to-go. They don't sell any distilled spirits at this time. They are allowed to under the license that they have, but they don't sell any distilled spirits at any of their other locations. It's not really an endeavor that they're looking to get into, but I just wanted to be clear on that. Now, as I mentioned, they have 114 other stores, so they have a good idea of how operations should look. So, they've ironed out all of the kinks, and they'll bring White Marsh Township, all the safety policies and procedures that they have in place at their other 114 locations. And I'm very pleased to announce that 114 locations, operation spanning since 2009, Giant Food Stores has never been cited for any sales to minors or any sales to intoxicated persons. They have an excellent record, and as someone who's been in this industry now for about five years, I can say that's pretty impressive. A lot of our other clients, we represent all of the other grocery stores and convenience stores that have liquor licenses in Pennsylvania, none have as good of a record as Giant Food Stores has. So, I'm very pleased to be able to report that to you all, and they want to bring those same precautions and policies to the White Marsh Township location. And so, with that, I did want to get into what the other stores have going for their operations, which again, would be brought here. One of the first policies that I'll bring up is that they have a 100% carding policy. So, no matter what your age, you're going to be carded by an associate. That associate is trained by, not only through the Responsible Alcohol Management Program, which each associate that works in the beer garden goes through, but they also go through Giant Food Stores' internal policies. And what they're taught is that when someone has an alcohol purchase, they take the ID from that individual, they check the birth date. Before they can even scan the beer or wine sale into their register, they have to type the birth date in, which verifies the purchase. Then they also have to run that ID through a card scanner transaction device, and that device is another safeguard to make sure that that's not a fraudulent ID, and that patron is, in fact, over 21 or older. So, those safeguards are in place right there. Other internal policies and procedures are to have a manager that's present on the location. That manager goes through additional training, so someone will always have an idea of who's working to make sure that the associates that are carding have gone through that training and have gone through the ramp training as well. They will have security cameras that focus on all of the alcohol as well as the register. There's going to be a specific register on the licensed premises that is the only register in the grocery store that accepts the beer and wine sales. So, that ensures that there's a camera focused on that register, as well as ensures that an associate who has been trained is taking the IDs and making the alcohol sales. There's a limited hour of operation for their alcohol sales, so the store currently is open from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, but the hours of operation for alcohol sales will be Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., including Sunday as well. So, daily 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. There is a limit on the amount of alcohol that a person can purchase. So, for beer sales, they're permitted to buy 192 fluid ounces of beer in a single transaction, which is roughly two six-packs. And then for wine, they're permitted to buy up to 3,000 milliliters, which is roughly four standard bottles of wine. If a customer wishes to purchase more than that, they have to leave the licensed premises and come back on in order to do a second transaction. And again, the registers are programmed to make sure that the associate is not scanning over that limited amount. For the on-premises consumption, Giant permits its customers to consume up to two standard pours of either beer or wine. A standard pour for beer is 12 ounces, a standard pour for wine is six ounces. They sell them in smaller containers, so it's easier for them to look into. You'll see on the floor plan, I can pass it out here in a second, but there will be seating that's going to be located on the licensed premises, up to 30 seats, and this is the only area in which anyone can consume alcohol. So, no one can purchase the alcohol and walk around the grocery store and do their shopping. They're limited just to that seating area, and the reason being is Giant wants to maintain that two beer, two wine policy, so they need to be somewhere where the associate at the register can see them at all times and make sure that they're monitoring who's drinking there, as well as to ensure that it's not getting into any of anyone's hands who hasn't been properly carded by somebody. With that, I'm going to go and pass out the floor plans. We can just-
Want them marked as applicants exhibit one?
Yeah, that would work.
That sounds good.
It's also up here on the big screen. Do you want to just, if you don't mind, just taking one, passing it down? I think I have enough for everybody. So, to give the residents an idea of what they're looking at, the first page of the exhibit is just an overall view of the grocery store as it exists today, as well as the changes that will be made to it. So, what you're looking at, and it's a little bit tough to see on the projector, but on the floor plans, you'll see it better, is the gray shaded area is what's going to be considered licensed by the Liquor Control Board. Now, this is just a proposed plan. There could be amended, some changes to it if we do apply with the Liquor Control Board. Sometimes they come back and ask for some variations, which we comply with. But you can see that it's a very small amount of the store. It's important for residents, I know, to know that they won't be losing any merchandise. It's all going to be just re-merchandise. Shelves are going to, you know, be condensed to their best-selling items, and it'll just be sort of moved around a little bit. So, it's currently located back in the deli section, if you're familiar with that Giant Food Store. They'll be adding booth seating, which is where one of the aisles used to be, so that's where you're going to see your seating for up to 30 patrons, as well as they'll add that register onto the licensed premises, which will be manned by a trained associate. And then, as you can see, there are cold beer doors, as well as shelf units. Shelf units will be for the warm product, so any configuration from six packs to 12 packs will be- So what you're looking at, and it's a little bit tough to see on the projector, but on the floor plans, you'll see it better, is the gray shaded area is what's going to be considered licensed by the Liquor Control Board. Now, this is just a proposed plan. Um, there could be amended, some changes to it. If we do apply with the Liquor Control Board, sometimes they come back and ask for some variations, which we comply with. Um, but you can see that it's a very small amount of the store. Um, it's important for residents, I know, to know that, um, they won't be losing any merchandise. It's all going to be just re-merchandise. Shelves are going to, you know, be condensed to their best-selling items. Um, and it'll just be sort of moved around a little bit. So it's currently located back in the deli section, if you're familiar with that Giant Food Store. Um, they'll be adding booth seating, which is where one of the aisles used to be. So that's where you're going to see your, um, seating for up to 30 patrons, as well as they'll add that register onto the licensed premises, which will be manned by a trained associate. And then, as you can see, there are cold beer doors, as well as shelf units. Shelf units will be for the warm product. So any configuration from six-packs to 12-packs will be, um, on the shelves there, as well as single bottles of wine. And then in the individual, uh, cold beer doors, you're going to get those same configurations. But they also have a mix of six, which is one of their more popular offerings, where someone can come in and get six different one, single bottles, um, in order to try a sampling of, of all kinds. Um, at 10:00 p.m. each night, the cold beer doors are individually locked, so you won't be able to access that at all. Um, and then the register will be closed down at 10:00 p.m. So after 10:00 p.m., there will be no alcohol sales. Um, even if someone were to grab something from the shelf and bring it up to one of the front registers, the front registers don't scan those SKUs, so they'll be, you know, taking the product back to where it's, it's legally allowed to be. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to the board, as well as the residents. If anyone has any questions, um, please feel free to ask if it's about the Liquor Code or the operations. I also failed to mention, I apologize, I have Colin Heap here with me. He is the manager of special projects at Giant Food Stores. So if there's something that I can't answer, I'm sure he'd be willing to step in.
Just a, a couple logistic questions.
Sure.
With having this, should this get approved? And, you know, when is it supposed to start? You know, like, what is the construction? There's already a lot of construction going on in that area right now. So can you talk a little bit about what that would look like?
Yeah, sure. So, um, we would apply almost immediately once we got an approved resolution. And then Giant does all of their construction overnight. Um, so they try not to impede on any of the customer traffic. Um, and, uh, for the most part, they're pretty successful in not interrupting anyone's shopping schedules. Um, they're, so we'll apply right away. Um, I believe construction's in July, and then they're set to open in August of this year.
If people are having, you said they're limited to, in essence, like, two, two, two pours. Is that from their purchase? In other words, they can purchase a six-pack and, and have two beers of their six-pack?
Yeah, that's correct. They could do that. Um, they could buy the single bottles. Um, you know, a, any configuration, but as long as they're only drinking two. Um, Giant Food Stores, like I said, they have 114 operations of this same exact policy. Um, they've found, and they've been able to look at their sales records, it's about 2%, and sometimes that's even high, of their total alcohol sales are actually bought for consumption on premises. Um, so it's really limited. And to be totally honest, they wouldn't do it if they didn't have to. Um, we tried to do away with on-premises sales, and the Liquor Control Board came back and said, because of the license you've got, you've got to sell for on-premises consumption. So pretty much all of our clients, convenience stores and grocery stores across the board, limit it. And they've been pretty good about policing it, making sure that no one's, um, coming in already visibly intoxicated to get alcohol, making sure that it sticks to that two, two-beer, two-wine limit.
So you have 30, 30 seats?
Yes.
But they're going to not really ever be to capacity from your experience?
That's correct. 30 seats is another requirement by law. Um, we can't get around that. Um, Giant does encourage people to use the seating. They have a grab-and-go section, which is on the licensed premises, which will have sandwiches, salads, wraps, as well as, um, the seating's right next to the deli. So they always encourage patrons to stop in, have lunch, and use that seating there.
It's like the new model in shopping.
Yes.
Except you can't walk around and have your beer.
Right.
Yeah.
Unfortunate.
Okay.
Perhaps Madam Chair, there are no further board questions, perhaps see if there's any public comment. And then the board can go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing if they so wish, or, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. He, he was, he had a question.
I started with a question, but it wasn't important.
I'm sorry. I was just trying to, yeah, I guess so. So if there's any public comment, the board can close the public hearing and continue it to another time if they so wish. Yeah.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
And Madam Chair, there is, if, if, it's up to the board, of course. But they want to go out of order. There's a resolution on the agenda for approval of the liquor license transfer.
Okay. Then I would like to do that. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 202005, granting liquor license transfer to 10 East Ridge Pike Giant Food Stores LLC? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from January 6th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Good. Moving on to motions. No?
Board discussion items.
Board discussion items. Here we go. I just have to read it here.
Under, under board discussion items, you can just read that discussion item, and that'll start the discussion.
Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution?
There is a brief review. The review of subdivision land development.
Review. On the agenda.
Do I have a motion to review subdivision land development?
No motion required. Just state the item, and then, uh, Mr. Guttenplan will give a brief review.
Can we review Sunnybrook Golf Club, 30, 398 Stanton Avenue, preliminary, preliminary final plan? Charlie?
Thank you. Uh, this is a four-lot minor subdivision for Sunnybrook Golf Club. Uh, the board saw this subdivision, uh, in May of 2019. At that time, had some questions and tabled action on it. Um, there was a, um, staff meeting with then-supervisor Chair Sterling and, um, the current chair, um, to get a better understanding of what the, um, golf club was intending with this subdivision. And they are back this evening, um, seeking, uh, approval of the subdivision. One of the lots, which is known as Lot 2, is a very small lot. It's actually to be transferred, um, and annexed to an adjacent property to solve an encroachment problem. It's less than three tenths of an acre. Um, then there are two potential building lots, Lots 3 and 4, each of which are three and three-quarter acres in size. And as you see in your packet, um, there was a zoning hearing board decision last year to allow these lots to be created. Because they are rear or flag lots, there were certain requirements of the zoning code for which they needed variances. Um, the remainder of the, um, acreage, 218 acres, more or less, is Lot 1, and that would be the existing golf course. Um, there are members of the, um, golf club and officials here this evening. Um, Scott Badami, the first vice president of the board, um, wants to present a short PowerPoint, which I think will explain some of the, um, questions and concerns that the board had raised last year.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Scott Badami. I am the first vice president over at Sunnybrook. I'm gratified this evening to appear not alone, but with a number of my colleagues. Sitting next to me is Ray Ix. Mr. Ix was a longtime Sunnybrook Board of Governor member and is the immediate past president over at Sunnybrook. Next to Mr. Ix is Mrs. Debbie Main. Mrs. Main is the current president at Sunnybrook. Oh, I should have said, Mr. Ix joined Sunnybrook in 2001. I'm pleased that I joined Sunnybrook in 2001, slightly before Mr. Ix. Uh, Mrs. Main has been, uh, a member of Sunnybrook since 1995 with her family and is the current board president. Next to Mrs. Main is Jamie Jun. Jamie is our land development lawyer. Sitting next to Jamie is William Garbais. Mr. Garbais is the general manager at Sunnybrook. He's been our general manager since 2013, however. Billy has been with us in many forms, many roles, since he was a teenager, and I believe has been, uh, with the club for approximately 30 years at this point. Um, so if anything I say is wrong, blame Billy. Here we go. Okay. Sunnybrook Golf Club. Uh, our address, of course, 398 Stanton Avenue. And this is the property that makes up Sunnybrook Golf Club. Sunnybrook Golf Club is approximately 235 acres here in White Marsh Township. We are pleased to be one of the six golf courses here in White Marsh Township. When we started this process, I could only name five of those. Um, but, uh, after learning about it, indeed, there are six. We are here today to talk about Sunnybrook Golf Club and about approximately 3% of the acreage of the club. What I'm going to do over the next few minutes is talk about what we have presented before you and some of the reasons why we've asked to do this. Importantly, however, I want to make sure you understand what we're not doing. We are not selling the club. We are not developing the club. We are not going to be appearing before you for 126 townhomes. There's one thing for me to say it, and there's another thing for me to show it to you. And then we're jumping through. Charlie. There we go. All right. Sunnybrook Golf Club was chartered in 1914. Now, we've not been at White Marsh Township since 1914. Sunnybrook started in Flower Town, and it was an 18-hole golf course. And it lived in, thrived in Flower Town. Back in the 1950s, for a number of reasons, principally, though, uh, the, uh, construction of Route 309, uh, which was going to go through the back nine of Sunnybrook, uh, the, the club at that point needed a new location. And after scouting around, they looked, and they found the old William Distant Farm, uh, at the corner of Stanton and Joshua Road. And ultimately, that land was purchased to become the new Sunnybrook Golf Club. Sunnybrook. Hang on, my computer may work better. Or not? Or not? Eh, you know, maybe the batteries. There we go. So in the 1950s, uh, here in White Marsh Township, we began constructing the club. Uh, the club opened in White Marsh Township in 1956. It included a golf course. It also included a clubhouse. And that clubhouse at the time, boy, this is just.
Charlie, you're right. Just tell Charlie.
Charlie, can you do it? Can you go to the next one? Go to the next one? And the clubhouse was built in 1956. What I'd like to show you with the next couple of slides are what Sunnybrook has done to improve our club, um, over the last, let's say, 12 years. While the clubhouse was built in, originally in the 1950s, opened in 1956, by 2007, it needed some updating. So in, go back one. So, keep going back. So in 2007, 2008, the club used its current footprint and essentially put a new clubhouse together using the current footprint. At that time, please know that we worked in, hand-in-hand with the township to make sure, uh, all codes, all compliance was done correctly. It was approximately a $7 million upgrade. It did the clubhouse, as well as all of Sunnybrook's greens. Next, Charlie. If that wasn't enough, two years later, 2010, 2011, we did what we call our bunker project. It was approximately a million dollars. Go back one. Oh, I'm sorry. Just for illustration, these are the bunkers on 18 and 9. And we redid many of the bunkers on the course. Again, another million dollars, uh, that the club spent on itself. Next slide. While we did the clubhouse in 2007, 2008, uh, ultimately, it was decided that the kitchen had not been redone, and we wanted to continue, uh, the dining experience that the club has. So in 2017, under the direction of President Ix, we did a million-dollar renovation of our kitchen. Next slide. Other way. All right. It's all good. There's the two inside of the kitchen. One more, Charlie? And in addition to that, we enclosed one of our rooms, which is these windows here, and built this patio. Spent about another million dollars. Next slide. If that wasn't enough, we then spent about $250,000 on our driving range. This is right next to the first hole. You can't see this. This is a bunch of junior golfers. Uh, we leveled off the driving range, uh, and spent that money as well to improve the club. My point for bringing this up this evening is to let you know that Sunnybrook has continued to invest literally millions of dollars into the club. We've done that to enhance the club for the membership. We've done that without selling any land. We've done that without having a developer want to put townhouses on Sunnybrook's property. We have now been a partner with you in White Marsh Township for some 60 years. And on my behalf, on President Ix, President Main, Mr. Garbais, it's our level goal to continue to be a partner here with you as a golf club for the next 60 years. I've been on the Board of Governors for almost 10 years. Mr. Ix was on the Board of Governors for more than that. Mrs. Main has been on it for longer than that. I can tell you that at no point has it ever come up in any board meeting that we're going to put townhouses on Sunnybrook Golf Club. It, there is no plan to do that. And I hope the financial information that I've provided, the detail that we've provided, shows this board our commitment to remain partners here with White Marsh Township. But there's more to it than that. Charlie, next? Okay. Remember, we had that second slide where we had the map of Sunnybrook Golf Club and our land. This is that map, a little more detailed, and I'd like to just show you a little bit. But this is, again, the 235 acres that make up Sunnybrook Golf Club. While I've talked about enhancements to the club and how we've been here for 60 years, we want to be here for 60 more years, it's more than just that. We want to be active stewards of White Marsh Township's land. And how do I show you we've done that? This is how. This is, in blue, a 34-acre swatch that is now the Montgomery County Land Trust. We put that land in a trust, I believe, in 1995, 34 acres. It's preserved forever. It's preserved forever. The reason we did that was to show that, and the reason I'm telling you this is so that you know Sunnybrook is a steward of this environment. We're not trying to put townhouses on this property. When Mr. Ix, when he was president, thought it would be a good idea to survey Sunnybrook's property and see where our boundaries really were. It was enlightening. I, I'm not a land development lawyer, and I don't play one on TV. I naively assume that properties, like my backyard, generally straight and then on a right angle. But when we did the survey of Sunnybrook Golf Club, our 235 acres, we found anything but. The way the land works, and when you really blow it up, with respect to some of our neighbors, specifically on Stanton Avenue, and then at the back end of the course, on Militia Hill Road, some of the property lines literally run like this. They're diagonal. They're jagged. Some of the backyards, well, part of it was Sunnybrook, part of it was that our neighbors, uh, one, uh, deck literally was cut in half. One person's air conditioner was technically on Sunnybrook's, uh, side of the land. So under Mr. Ix's leadership, what the club did was start to reach out to our neighbors to say, "Let's see if we can work this out, and let's see if we can just square off some lots." We did that to one of our Stanton Avenue neighbors a couple of years ago, and we're back tonight to finish another Stanton Avenue neighbor. What we're talking about tonight, the 3% of the Sunnybrook property, is right here, along Stanton Avenue. Uh, the one lot line change, which is less than an acre, it's for the Missit family. The Missit family, they're Sunnybrook members. Um, we worked and we went to them and talked about the property when they bought it. And they said, "Yes, let's figure out this lot line change." And then they said, "You know, we'd like to make our backyard just a little bit bigger. Would you mind selling us a slightly larger parcel?" Club entered into a purchase and sale agreement with them, and we're seeking your approval, following the approval of the Planning Commission here in White Marsh and your zoning hearing board, and we're seeking this board's approval for that very small lot, lot line change, right over here for one of our property owners. Because we had already engaged council, we had already engaged the land development engineers to get the survey done, at that point, the club thought, "Should we do anything else?" And it was proposed, perhaps, that we go ahead, because we've got all of the infrastructure in place, "Let's take a look at the two, three-acre lots, again, right here, to potentially get subdivision approval from this board if we wanted to put either single-family homes on them, or, as we did the conservation easement, to potentially conserve them over time." to potentially conserve them over time, depending on what the club wanted to do." While I can tell you that we're not putting townhouses on Sunnybrook Golf Club, I don't know which of those options the club is going to choose, if either, for the subdivision. That just hasn't been decided yet. It just hasn't. You know, our history indicates we believe in conservation easements, and we may do that again here, but I don't know. What I do know is, I anticipate myself or one of my colleagues appearing before you or working with your staff on some additional improvements. Under Mrs. Maine's leadership, our Strategic Planning Committee is looking at Sunnybrook five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. And what we're talking about doing is maybe relocating our tennis courts, maybe relocating the paddle courts. Sunnybrook, I'm embarrassed to say, is still on the septic. We'd like to perhaps hook up to the sewer system. These are the types of things that I anticipate myself or one of my colleagues appearing before you or working with your staff over the coming years, because that's what Sunnybrook wants to do. As I showed you a few minutes ago, we worked really hard over the past 12 years improving Sunnybrook for our membership. We intend to continue to do that. All of those prior improvements, of course, were done without selling any land. We're not selling land for the purpose of selling land, for developing it. We're simply reserving the right to subdivide this because we went through the process, hired the lawyers, hired the engineers for this very small portion, less than 3% of the club. That completes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you have about it. Otherwise, we would respectfully request the approvals as the zoning hearing board approved it last year.
What's, if you know, what's the history behind lots three and four? Maybe I should say two, three, and four. In other words, why are there separate lots there as opposed to the whole property being one lot?
So, very good, very good question. Another thing, for example, when I purchased my house, I bought a lot. When Sunnybrook purchased itself and bought it, all of these came from different areas. This was the William Distin Farm. This little tract here was purchased about 15 years ago from the owner at that point. It was the conglomeration of how the club came together. It's not like buying a backyard. Completely shocked me when I learned it. I, of course, thought it was just one plat. And that's how it just came together back in the 50s when they started buying all the land to put it together.
So, when Sunnybrook bought the property, these other lots didn't necessarily exist. They were their own separate lots?
Correct.
That were purchased at some point?
I believe that's...
Just to add land onto the...
Correct.
The overall property? Thank you. Please.
So, yeah...
Let's call up the mic, please.
My colleague, Mr. Ickes. So, you'll notice up here, on the other side of that green line, there's five lots approximately. One, two, three, maybe it's only four. The one closest to our property there, we bought that three years ago, $800,000. So, we're renting that now to... So, we bought it because the owners were selling. It's about five acres, it's right there. So, we bought it, we're renting it out now to hopefully pay down the debt. And when that's done, I think the whole intention of the club is to put that into, make it, knock the house down, to be honest with you, and just make it open space again. So, we're fully intended to protect all of that over here. So, we're all about protecting our borders. This is just strategically a good thing for us to do while we were doing this lot line change to correct a lot line that literally went through the backyard of this person's house. As Mr. Ickes indicated, that's Militia Hill Road on the back end. And those are properties owned by various homeowners. And then Sheeran, the landscaping company, is also on that side. And when Mr. Ickes was president, 5180 Militia Hill Road came on the market, and we bought it. And the goal, of course, is to preserve, protect land like that. And so, that's the reason we did it. And as I say, as Mr. Ickes indicated, we have tenants in the property now.
Do I understand that current members of the club have expressed interest in purchasing the two lots?
Really good question. We have no confirmed member saying, "Hey, Scott, I want to buy that land." There is nothing like that, because it has not been approved yet. Would we hope some member might want to conserve it and put it in an easement? Sure. Is that the, you know, the exact perfect outcome? Sure. But no, I have no member that's come to me to say, "Hey, Scott, I'm spending $400,000 on that land." No, sir, not yet.
So, that's not what prompted the...
It is not.
...move to subdivide?
It is not.
And I understand from the conditions of the zoning decision that you reserve the right to offer it first to members of the club?
That would be our preference, yes.
But if there is no interest, then you can offer it to, you must first offer it then to a governmental entity for conservation easement before you then market it to the general public?
That was one of the conditions, yes.
Can I have one more thing to that question?
Sure. And Debbie, jump in here too. I don't think there's any intention to do anything, like, it's possible that these could be subdivided and nothing happened ever, or 20 years. There is no immediate plans or discussions that I'm aware of that anybody's had. I'm not on the board now because I'm the immediate past president, but I was the president when all these things happened. There is no plan to do anything. This is just to enable us that 10, 20, 30, 40 years from now, 100 years from now, it would put us in a position to either conserve it or, let's say the club were to have a capital gain at some point, we could then, once that were to happen, we could then put one or two of these lots into a conservation easement and get a tax credit for us to offset that capital gain that we might have. It's just a very long-term planning option for the club. So, if this were to be approved, there is absolutely no plan. It would take years, I think, before anything would ever happen to any of these lots. So, there's no existing plan to say, "Approved, let's put them up in auction for members." That's not going to happen.
And the waivers that you're seeking for this subdivision, again, as I understand, it would apply solely to this plan?
That's correct.
And would not apply to any subsequent plan or to any subsequent development?
That is correct.
Would the board like to see the actual subdivision again? We have that as well, if anybody needs to see that.
Sure, that'd be great. And while you're bringing that up, I mean, I appreciate, I met with you this past summer, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that and coming here again and all of you coming and presenting how you have. It is sensitive. I, I'm particularly sensitive to this. It seems very benign at first glance to just do a subdivision. It's a little confusing to me personally. Just, I completely understand the desire to have the other family have the, have the lot line be rearranged. That I understand. But it sounds like you're saying to add this other subdivision is merely kind of out of convenience, because you're already doing this. So, why not now, go ahead and do the subdivision? But there's no development plan associated with it. So, why add it now if there's no plan for the future?
Because, as we indicated, we have the lawyers, we had the engineer, and it felt like the right time, seemed like the right time. This is what I can promise you. The next time Sunnybrook is before this board, it's going to be for our strategic plan, and we're going to be talking about additional improvements and investments into the club, not sale of land.
Any idea when you're doing your strategic plan?
Really good question, and Mrs. Maine would jump on my throat if I gave you a date on that. I will tell you, we're having a Strategic Planning Committee meeting tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock. But there is no plan yet to put forward. But we will work hand-in-glove with the township. As I say, my hope, get us off septic, get us on the sewer with respect to the other upgrades that we're planning for five, 10, 20 years in the future.
Yeah, and again, I appreciate you coming here and explaining, you know, the amount of money and time that you've put into developing and enhancing the club. Are there any other board comments?
So, I actually had a question with regard to your property lines as a whole, the big map that you showed at the beginning.
You bet.
Do any of your property lines directly abut Fort Washington State Park?
Fort Washington State Park, no.
No? You're much further up.
It's very close.
But I...
It's a corner, it's a corner intersection.
Yeah, I wondered, because I know proximity-wise, but I wasn't sure how far back, how far back you go.
There is, I can tell you, I can tell you that there is a plan in place for those where we bought that one house, that there is another house, you probably know about it, the house that had the fire, right? And so, that house, if that house came about, we would, at a price that we thought was reasonable, the club we thought was reasonable, to buy and tear the house down and leave it be open space? That's our plan. These are the plans that we are talking about, right? And the also Sheeran? We would love to own Sheeran and not have that be there. I mean, we like them, they're nice people and everything, but...
We hire them to do work for us, by the time.
They do good work.
But we would love, but we would love to have that be open space and clean, right? And then there's also one other house along there. So, there's five houses, the original farmhouse, plus the other three houses in Sheeran. We already own one. So, we're really trying hard to protect our borders. And this piece here, it made sense to do while we were doing the lot line change and also if we can get a financial reward out of that, if, for lack of a better word, by putting it into a conservation easement, like we did along the rest of that driveway. That's the driveway right there. We want to do that. And we might not necessarily want to give the, put the rest of the land in conservation easement, right? As we decide what we're doing for a strategic plan. But these lots here make sense to do something like that.
And how many acres are unprotected? You know, take out from the 200 that you said, 235, minus the golf course, minus the easement?
Yeah, it's in clean and green already. It's in the various parts, because it's not one. But yeah, it's already clean and green, and so we've already designated that.
And it would take a lot.
To unwind that, you would have to go back and pay years of taxes, and there is no appetite for that.
But aren't there 57 acres that are not covered by clean and green?
Yes.
Alright, so you've got 57 acres of quote-unquote unprotected land?
In theory, yes, that is correct.
But the underlying zoning is double A residential?
Double A, for the stretch that these lots are on before you tonight, double A residential, yes, sir.
Is that the same for all the 57 acres?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Charlie, can you put up our other map again?
Sure. Double A residential, all this. And the other side.
Yeah, and the other side.
And the other side.
Alright. And what's the minimum lot size for double A? Two?
I'm sorry, what?
Minimum lot size for double A?
Minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet.
For double A?
Yes.
So, that's about two acres?
Two acres.
Just over.
That's assuming water and sewer. If there's only one of those and they don't get sewer, then it's one and a half acres per lot.
Any other board?
So, it's great that you guys are putting so much money into the course. I mean, the course looks great. I had the opportunity to play it a few times last year. There are too many bunkers. How's the membership doing? Is membership, is membership about...
Membership is doing well. As you know, the average age of Sunnybrook has been consistent for the 20 years that I've been a member. One of our goals with our strategic plan with respect to five, 10, 20 years is to certainly attract some more younger families, 100%. But yeah, Sunnybrook's financial footing remains as sound as it's ever been. We're here for the long haul.
Yeah. 280 golf members, 120 a house. It's been those numbers for 20 years. And you have to remember that there's 25 that leave a year for various reasons, moving, change in life, et cetera. So, that means there's 25 new members, on average, becoming members every year for the last 20 years. It's really, the golf clubs have had the declining environment nationally. Sunnybrook is above averages nationally consistently for two decades.
Good.
It's really strong financially. And we think we can do a great job of preserving. There's a lot of people at Sunnybrook who are very involved in conservation. The McCoslins, there are many. The club is very involved in the White Marsh Foundation, where we, our chefs go to their fundraiser to cook, and Billy's very involved. So, we're committed to this. We're trying to just financially put together a package here and take advantage financially of conservation easements.
I understand. And, you know, you're over, you're talking about the big objections. You said townhomes numerous times. When we look at the agenda and you see a golf course now looking at two single-family homes, what goes through my mind is, what's next? So, to hear that the golf club is in great financial condition, your membership is growing, I think that's what I want to hear.
What's next is our strategic plan and further updates to the club, upgrades to the club.
You would have to, in order for there ever to be townhouses on Sunnybrook land in the future, that would have to be approved by the membership. And I have to tell you, I don't ever see that happen.
To be a reason.
So, let alone if the board, I just don't see that happen. We've already done too much to protect what we have by putting the 235 in clean and green and doing all these things. That would be unwinding decades of effort.
Okay.
Any other board? Any other board comment? I'd like to open it up for public comment.
Bob Segg, been a resident of White Marsh my whole life. This plan that they're talking about without having any real plan for it doesn't sound good. The past board, boards, excuse me, passed that thing up at Bridge and Butler for a one-store. And now they say it's going to be three stores, and they've reduced the amount of parking because they didn't give you a plan for what they were going to use that property for. It's the same thing they're doing here. Alls they tell you, they want to subdivide it. But they don't tell you why they want to subdivide it or what's going to happen to it. I would be on the thought of denying it. Let them come back to you when they actually want to do something with that property.
Bob, you're talking about the shopping center?
Yes.
He's talking about them not having a plan right here. It's like they just want to subdivide it. He was saying the shopping center.
Well, just to be clear, the shopping center, they provide a very clear plan of what they were building and the potential that it could have the three tenants in that building. So, we had very clear plans.
It wasn't put out to the public that way. I mean, I was at the meetings, and alls they said, "Well, we all know what we're going to have in here."
They just said they didn't know the tenants. That's all, that's what they didn't know, who the tenants were going to be. We knew everything else about the property, we just didn't know who the tenants were going to be.
I think the general public thought it was going to be a store going to take up that spot, not three stores that's going to have more traffic. It was too open-ended. Same with this, it's open-ended. You don't know what they're really going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-06 granting preliminary final plan approval for subdivision land development number 03-19 Sunnybrook Golf Club, 398 Stanton Avenue for a four-lot subdivision for the creation of two building lots for two single-family homes?
So moved. So moved.
Second. Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and the board. I appreciate it very much.
Good luck.
Okay, moving on to motions. Do I have a motion to approve the intent to award the public bid for Stanton Avenue Joshua Road intersection improvement along with two alternates, alternates for Flower Town Joshua Road intersection improvements and Cameras to Highway Materials, Inc. for $4,227,473.50? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hirsch for an explanation on the bid.
Thank you, Rick. So we opened the bid for this project on January 10th. They, we received three bids from, one from Highway Materials, one from J.D. Morrissey, and one from RoadCon Incorporated. My office has reviewed the bids for completeness and accuracy. And after consulting with township staff, we recommend the award of the base bid and both alternates in the amount referenced by Mr. Nestor. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I just want to also note that the project is partially funded by grants from the County Transportation Program and PennDOT's Greenlight Go.
Do you know what the grants were?
The amounts for each one, 199,504 from the County Transportation and 593,312 from Greenlight Go.
Excellent.
Can I add something to?
Of course.
So what are we doing? What is this project? What is it going to create there as part, as part of this bid? So what it is going to do at Stanton and Joshua, it is going to create designated left-hand turn lanes in all four directions. We've acquired the right of way necessary from all, from that intersection, from all the adjacent property owners. You have seen some work out there with the utilities in which they have moved the utility lines. So that will allow us, our contractor to go in and to create designated left-hand turn lanes in all four directions of widening. At Flower Town under the first alternate at Flower Town and Joshua, same thing. It's going to create designated left-hand turn lanes in all four directions. We've acquired the right of way necessary from all the property owners to do that. The utilities also have made the, moving the utility poles back so that our contractor can go in and do the work. It will, that intersection, it will tee off that intersection. We all have been through that intersection, know how difficult and dangerous it, it can and has been. So that will create more of a tee intersection there. That will also allow for camera usage there. That is a public safety issue. That can be monitored by the Police Department and others for violations and, not motor violations, but if the, you know, we are, if there's any kind of case or something along those lines that we're looking for somebody, that will allow us to monitor those as well. So the, the big piece of that is it's a huge capital project. It is an extension of the three intersections that, two of which are done. They are the intersections of Stanton and Militia Hill Road, which are offset intersections where we put in traffic signals, as well as the current intersection that is under construction, which we anticipate completion in March, which is Flower Town, Stanton, and Cricket. So that, that will complete this large scale five intersection improvement with this bid being awarded. We anticipate it to start in 2020. And it'll probably take into probably the end of 2020, beginning of 21, 2021 to complete both of those intersections. Will both intersections be under construction at the same time? And will they be closed at the same time? Probably a common question that you will receive. That is not the intention. It will, right now, the intention is for the detour to be one leg at a time. So it'll, it'll have to close one leg at a time. We will coordinate that as best as possible, make sure that we're sending out and alerting the motorists with our message boards. And there'll be detour signs along through with social media. Once the contractor's on board, they will also be able to dictate whether or not some of the closures have to be permanent closures, can they be daily closures, can they be flagged? So a lot of that will happen as we engage the contractor through the pre-bid meeting and process and so on. So just kind of an overview of what we're doing and what this will eventually accomplish as part of a large scale capital project.
Thank you. It's a long time in coming. I'm glad, glad we're getting there.
Mr. Hirsch, can you just confirm the total bid amount?
The total bid amount that I have here is $4,231,068.
Yeah, that's not what I have. Should I reread this?
I, I think so. I think that that is.
So why don't, why don't you, somebody whoever made the motion for the bid, accept Mr. Hirsch's revised amount and whoever seconded it, if they're okay with that, second that. And then you therefore you have a revised motion to vote on.
So I'd like to accept Mr. Hirsch's amount. And can you restate the amount then?
Yeah, $4,231,068.
Should I say so moved again? So moved.
Second.
Do you have a question, Mr. Drosner?
I do. I wonder whether we should either take a vote or reject the initial motion and, and, and just.
Start clean?
Yeah, I, I think.
Sure. You can, so you had a motion on the floor with a second for the other amount. Probably the easiest thing to do is go ahead and either motion to table it or reject or vote on it.
Reject it. Say no. Clean, start over.
I have a motion, I would have a motion to reject that, that, that initial motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, let's try this again. And it's, before I read it officially, $4,231,068.
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the intent to award the bid, the public bid for Stanton Avenue and Joshua Road intersection improvement along with the two alternates for Flower Town Joshua Road intersection improvements and Cameras to Highway Materials, Inc. for $4,231,068? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to come up and comment, Mr. Litt?
Sorry, I think we got distracted by correcting the numbers.
I just had a couple of questions, if I may. These construction projects, this is all related to the litigation, the court order, correct?
Correct.
And that court order came about because of litigation between White Marsh Township and Mr. DePaul, correct?
Correct.
And now we are paying Mr. DePaul to do this. Is that correct, essentially?
Yep, we are.
Highway Materials is Mr. DePaul's company.
Correct.
As they were the lowest bidder.
All right, okay. I just want to be clear about.
Yeah.
Yes.
And now they're the lowest bidder, the other ones that want, that want it is done as soon as possible. So hopefully they're motivated to get it done as quickly as possible. We, we certainly see the irony in the situation.
Okay. Well, I think that deserves to be put out there and I'm happy to do that. As, if I recall, there were $6.5 million that were approved during the budget meetings for this expense, is that, in the capital budget, is that right? Something like that? I'm just wondering what, what's going to be done with the rest of the money?
Cause we'll figure that out when the project's over.
Is there anticipation more money?
We still have other bids to go out. There, we're not done with all the intersections.
We're still not done paying the current contractor, so there's that amount that's included in it. And there's this amount. And you know, that's provided there isn't any, you know, unforeseen cost or contingencies, change orders that come forward. So you know, we have to go through that process. It gives us a little bit of cushion. And if we have money remaining, this board will determine how best to spend.
I didn't realize that the, the, the current project has not been accounted for, that are currently underway, that this, that carried forward into the 2020 budget. Thank you.
Ms. Nestor, unfortunately, and I should have caught this beforehand, because there was no public comment before the motion was taken, I suggest you do the motion for the third time and re-adopt the motion because.
I'm getting there. I'm sorry.
Has to be take place.
You're getting good at this.
I, I apologize. I should have called that.
No, this is my.
All right, it's okay.
All right. Do I have to change the other?
No.
No, just make the motion again.
Do I have a motion to approve the intent to award the public bid for the Stanton Avenue Joshua Road intersection improvement along with the two alternates for Flower Town Joshua Road intersection improvements and Camera to Highway Materials, Inc. for $4,231,068? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Do I have a motion to authorize the public bid for the 2020 road paving program?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you, Rick. The plans and specifications for the 2020 road program are ready for bid. There's a total of 12 roads that'll be resurfaced as part of that program. The current budget is $305,000, which will be paid for through a combination of liquid fuels and PICO funding to, from roads that they installed utilities on this past year. The plan is to bid the project in February, open the bids and evaluate them in March with construction to occur in July and August and be completed by Labor Day. Would you like me to read a list of the roads?
If you wouldn't mind.
Yes, please. No problem. Foxwoods Circle from Cotler to the end of the cul-de-sac. Militia Way from Skipback Pike to the end of the cul-de-sac. Harry Street from 13th Avenue to 15th Avenue. White Marsh Valley Road from Sheaf Lane to the end of the cul-de-sac. Williams Road from Sheaf Lane to the end of the cul-de-sac. DeLeo Drive from Andorra Road to the cul-de-sac. Dogwood Lane from Baron Hill to the end of the cul-de-sac. Tamar Court from Ridge Pike to the cul-de-sac. Wagner Road from Crescent Avenue to the end of Loop. Cedar Drive from Pine Ridge Road to the end of the cul-de-sac. Cedar Place from Pine Ridge to the end of the cul-de-sac. And Hain Drive from Cotler Drive to 830 Hain Drive.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? There's none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the construction of a patio and sitting wall at 14 Catherine Lane?
So moved.
Second. Charlie?
Thank you. This is another patio in the Maple Hill Development. You've approved several certificates of appropriateness in the recent past. This is for lot, the lot which is addressed at 14 Catherine Lane that you see here in the subdivision plan highlighted in yellow. Similar to the other patio plans, this is at the rear of the house. And it is being done in pavers in shades of gray, also similar to what's being done in the other homes. It was reviewed by Harb at their January 8th meeting and recommended for approval.
Is this the first to come in for the patio?
No, this is about the fourth patio.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that this actually is being done by the same contractor that's doing two of the others. So I think he's doing a good job on the street.
Great. Any board comment? Any public comment? Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Happy to move forward with board and commission appointments. And I see two of them here. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment for the following individuals? Elizabeth Shaw Fink to Planning Commission term ending December 31st, 2022. And Patrice Turin to the Shade Tree Commission term entering December 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Welcome. And would you guys like to say anything? There's no, you're welcome, sure. No pressure.
Hello, I'm Patrice Turin. I just wanted to say thank you for, for the appointment. And I look forward to having the opportunity to serve White Marsh.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your time. Excellent. Any board comments? Any public comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $950,716.75 and payroll totaling $658,707.63 and pension paid costs totaling $4,384.57 for December 2019?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, sorry, I'm.
So just do it again. Make the motion again.
I'm getting there. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $950,716.75 and payroll totaling $658,707.63 and pension paid costs totaling $4,384.57 for December 2019?
So moved.
Second. Board comment? Public comment? Any comment? Mr. Miller and anything? Okay, make sure I'm good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Good, motion carries. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay. Couple of things that we're adding here. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number two for White Marsh Knolls LLC Germantown Pike in the amount of $34,063.82?
So moved.
Second. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you. So the first thing is that the total I have on here is.
Oh, jeez.
Forty-six. Forty-six, forty-six thousand, six thirty-one, ninety-eight. Do we want to change the motion now or?
I got to stop the cut and paste is what I do from the last month's motions and just put it over. I got to be a little more careful. That's my fault.
So what is it again?
I apologize.
Forty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Got it. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number two for White Marsh Knolls LLC Germantown Pike in the amount of $46,631.98?
So moved.
Second. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we received an escrow release request from the developer's representative, Mark Salamon, on January 10th. Our office has visited the site to confirm the items and quantities requested by Mr. Salamon to be accurate. We find them to be accurate and we put forth. We find them to be accurate, and we put forth the request in that amount. I can tell you that it's really just for clearing and erosion and sediment controls, which is all they're allowed to do by the Conservation District at this point. My understanding that they jumped the gun a little bit with the construction, with the clearing there, and they were cited by the Conservation District prior to my involvement, but that, that violation and citing is still, is still active, so they have to complete the ENS controls, then go back to the Conservation District so that they can get a clean bill before they can proceed with the site construction. So that is really the gist of the escrow release here. I, I can answer any questions you guys might have related to this project also, if you have anything.
So again, this is, this project started off very clunky. We're keeping our end of the bargain as far as you guys going down there checking them out.
Absolutely.
And the resident, when we had the resident meeting, there were some issues that they've been resolved, I think, for the most part.
Yeah, so I was in, received a memo that Krista did while she was with T and M, and they, there were action items in that memo, and my office has been working the past week or so to follow up on those action items. There was a, not a construction entrance, no trespassing sign installed last week at the beginning of that private drive that leads back to those, those three houses. We've got a certification from Mark Salamon's surveyor stating that the limited disturbance that they staked out was accurate to the plan that was approved by the board. And there was a private utility lateral that crosses this property. A gentleman was concerned about that being damaged during construction. We've met with him on site and staked out the limits of that easement so that the contractor's aware, and ultimately, they'll have to work with Aqua because it's a water line.
Okay.
What was the second condition in the middle? Can you read that one again? Something about that they certified something?
Yes, so there were some concerns from the adjacent residents that the limits of clearing were outside of what was approved in the plan. So the developer had that limit staked out by a surveyor. We got a certification letter from that surveyor saying that what they staked is what you
We're gonna probably have to meet with them again on certain, on certain issues. You know, just so, for those of you out there, there were things removed on people's property, at least that they thought was their property, even though it was staked off, they anticipated it was their property. So we're just gonna have to clear up a couple issues. For the most part, the residents over there are pretty, I mean, they're not happy about having townhomes in their backyards, as you can imagine. But the way the construction started off was, was poor. The communication was poor, but we've, we've, we've mended a lot of those, and, and people are a little bit happier with the respect they're getting from the developer at this point. There's still some things that need to happen, like a perimeter around the, around the site, and I think Krista's on top of that. But we're probably gonna have another neighbors' meeting with the developer at some point in the near future. I think that kind of summarizes where we are on the project across the street.
If Supervisor McCusker, if I could just say that, I know you've seen a new engineering firm, but the transition has been perfect over there. They've been engaged, Jim's been engaged with this process, and with the neighbors, met with some of the neighbors. We're happy to meet with any of the other neighbors and, you know, concerns that they have, so they are up to speed, ready to go, being watched every day by a construction manager. So if neighbors need to meet or reach out to you, or you'd like to meet again, please let us know. We're happy to, you know, meet with them and try and resolve any issues that they have.
Yeah, thanks. And, and again, you guys have done a great job in, with the transition. That's absolutely true. It's not, it's not our end of it, it's, you know, it's the way it goes with development sometimes, and it's a sensitive, sensitive issue over there in people's backyards, and we just want to make it right and make it as best as possibly can go for them. So we'll probably end up having to do another meeting and stay in touch, so, thanks for what you're doing.
Happy to meet with them, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between 14 East Germantown LLC versus Monco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the decrease in the assessment between 2015 and 2019, requiring a repayment of $786 in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second. Rick?
Thank you very much, Supervisor Boyle-Nester. This matter here is an assessment appeal in the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas. As you're well aware, the Colonial School Board does the heavy lifting in assessment appeals because they have the biggest tax benefit or loss to be dealt with. We often coordinate with their office, but we're not actively involved in this assessment appeal. In 2015, because of the reduced assessment, we would have to refund $128. 2016, $143. 2017, $144. 2018, $168. And 2019, $206, for a total of $789. So the reason why it is prudent for us to do so is for us to take some kind of an active matter in this, hire an appraiser, get involved in ourselves from a White Marsh Township perspective. It would cost a lot more money for my firm to litigate it, and in fact, hire an appraiser and various other things. The Colonial School District and the county have already signed off on this assessment appeal, so it's our recommendation you approve. And actually, there was, I guess, a $3 delta in between what was listed in the motion and actually what's required to be, to be refunded. So whoever made the motion and seconded that motion can accept the change for the refund being a total of $789, if that's acceptable.
Friday the 13th up here, what is going on up here?
I don't know. I, I do apologize, I don't know why. Maybe I have something.
So, so whoever made the motion.
I'll amend the motion to increase the amount to $789.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I guess the next, yeah, yeah.
I don't think there's any money on this one, so I think I'm okay.
Well, there is, but not, it's a percentage, so that.
You can share that, though.
Right, exactly.
It's not in the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the cost-sharing agreement with the Colonial School District and have the township solicitor intervene in the Court of Common Pleas case, Green Valley Country Club versus Board of Assessment Appeals? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kilkenny?
Yes, thank you very much. Just want to inform the board and the public, as I said, our office does not usually get involved in assessment appeal matters because it's not really cost-effective. But our office received a call from Alex Glassman, the attorney for the Colonial School District who handles assessment appeals, asking our office to, one, become involved, and, two, have the board consider a cost-sharing agreement in that the White Marsh Township would essentially pay 9% of hiring experts and moving forward with this assessment appeal. The reason being is, this is an assessment appeal well over $10 million that we're dealing with. It's a very large property in White Marsh Township, and not one that comes up for an assessment appeal very often. So despite the fact that we normally don't get involved and just let the school district litigate this themselves, they kind of asked for help, and we thought that it would be prudent to offer their assistance at the assessment appeal hearing.
Excellent. Thank you.
And the, the percentage of our, again, of our involvement for the cost-sharing agreement would be 9%.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. One more. Do I have a motion to authorize the township solicitor to enter our appearance and defend the Board of Supervisors decision before the Commonwealth Court in the Abolition Hall appeal? So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. As, as the board is aware and the public is aware, about a, close to a year and a half ago, I guess in October, the Board, October of 2018, the Board of Supervisors, after seven hearings, issued a conditional use hearing related to the Abolition Hall development. That was appealed to the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas, and then this fall, Judge Branca, Court of Common Pleas judge, issued a decision affirming the Board of Supervisors decision from 2018. That has since been appealed to the Friends, by the Friends of Abolition Hall, to the Commonwealth Court, which is the intermediary court between the Pennsylvania Supreme Court and our Court of Common Pleas. Kay Hobnany, and the developer, will obviously be actively involved in this case because they have interests in seeing this development happen. And the Court of Common Pleas level, although we are intervening and being involved, it's in a very limited nature. The limited nature would be that we would write a letter saying that we, after reviewing it, would support the Hobnany in brief, not write our own brief, and that a member of our firm would, would appear and say that, you know, we support the decision of the White Marsh Board of Supervisors from October of 2018. And that's what we're asking for direction from the board to move forward as we go through the appellate process with this.
Thank you. Any other board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. Now is time for public comment period? No, no take, no public comment? Any board member comments?
Thanks to everybody for sticking around.
Well, I personally want to say thank you for your patience as I learn the process of this. This is a good team, and I thank you all for being here and for your time and dedication along with our staff and engineer firm, Charlie and Sean, Rick, thank you, and Sean. I'd like to announce that we did have executive session where we discussed litigation.
And real estate, I guess, yeah.
Anything else?
Nope.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm on a roll here. Motion carries.